Good morning. It's ten o'clock. That's the time that was noticed and posted for our work session. It's Wednesday, April the tenth, twenty twenty-four, at ten o'clock A M. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane Bisbee. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. And any item on this agenda is open for discussion. We'll begin with the roll call. District one, Crosby is here. District two, Supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference I D one eight nine, six seven eight, seven nine six pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Introductions at a work session are done at the beginning of each person's speaking so that we'll know who the person is and who they represent. So we begin with Richard Karwaczka, our county administrator, for this budget work session.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Supervisor Crosby, Supervisor Judd. So today, Mr. Frisby, our budget manager, has put together presentation, and this is the foundation of our budget work session, kind of a kickoff. So to give information about our expenditure limit, our expenses, and our revenues. So at this point, I will kick off to Mr. Frisby.
Thank you. Juan Frisby, Budget Manager, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today I'll go over some early projections for next year's fiscal year F Y twenty-five budget. So to start off, I want to go through the budget work session timeline. So for April, early April, it's what we're doing right now, the budget projections for next year, early projection for next year. For next week, we have the elected official work sessions. Mid-May, final work sessions before tentative budget adoption, which will include revenue projections, funding requests. In June, we have the tentative budget adoption, July, the final budget adoption, and August will have the property tax rate adoption. So our expenditure limit for this year is of eighty-one point two. It's an increase from last year's seventy-eight point two expenditure limit. And I think these are the final numbers provided by C S A for this year. So these are almost set solid. If any changes, I'll let you know.
And C S A stands for the County Supervisor Association?
Correct. Yeah, the County Supervisor Association. Sorry. And so how is the expenditure limit calculated? It's based on population and inflation. What qualifies revenue that came from local tax and expenses are the ones that, you know, count for that. I also have a spreadsheet, one of the, one of the last slides, just for, and the appendixes to more detail that explains what qualifies and what doesn't qualify for the expenditure limit. So the next slide is is a graph explaining, well, demonstrating the increase from previous years to this year of eighty-one point two million. So for current year expenses, all departments and offices are expected to be under budget.
Is that why there's a thumbs up?
Yes, sir.
Or an attaboy?
So F Y twenty-five expensive increase of projection. We're expecting employer health benefits contributions to increase by eight hundred thousand.
Would you mind if I jump in next word?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frisby, so for C COM, the early projections for the budget were an increase of about five hundred thousand. However, we're still in discussions about the budget for C COM, which we have a meeting this Thursday, which is tomorrow. And from when we put this together, since then, it looks like there probably won't be an increase in the C COM budget. But we'll have a final decision tomorrow once the J P A board convenes. So it has changed from the early projection. So as that changes, only from the board.
Well, it may not be an increase, but what do we pay into C COM now?
One point two million?
I didn't get those numbers. I like didn't mean.
Okay.
Okay.
But we will get that information.
So, yeah, county market compensation updates will be presented on the mid-May work session. And the other thing to keep an eye on is the J L D C baseline is forecasting a funding shortfall of two point two billion that the state will need to address F Y twenty-four, F Y twenty-five's budget. This shortfall includes one point seven billion revenue shortfall, three hundred and ninety-six million in one-time spending from fiscal year twenty-four that may need to be included in fiscal year twenty-five and a one hundred million ending balance. In terms of spending, the baseline generally continues fiscal year funding levels until F Y twenty-five, while making typical formula adjustments and removing one-time fiscal year twenty-four appropriations. What this means is for, and this is still not, so this is the state's shortfall on their budget shortfall for next year. They're planning different things for their budget to either decrease projects to on, you know, county project, the way we're affected, and some county projects could be affected by depending on their decisions for the budget to see what they reduce. And
And if you don't mind if I get it? So right now, there haven't been any formal decisions or carrying the state's budget. I know that the governor and the legislature are starting the conversations, but nothing has been determined. I will keep the board updated as that happens, but I think it's important to notify the public of this shortfall because typically when the legislature has a shortfall, the burden tends to fall on the counties in one way or the other. Now, we don't know where that will happen, but when that does happen, obviously, that will affect our budget planning going forward. So we're hoping that it happens soon so that we can make a determination and adjust our budget accordingly.
Haven't they already asked us for an increase in all tax funding and other funding that we have to pay to the state?
Well, actually, and which Juan wants to address the state.
And I also think they include.
Actually, there is a decrease in our office this year. Surprise. I think there's a, and all of it. I think there's a decrease.
Because of population.
There's a decrease in our population that we care about. So based on that, there's been a decrease, but correct. Typically, there's always been this increase year after year. This is the first time that, and I think we're one of the only counties that has seen a decrease in that payment.
We've probably overpaid in the past.
Well, the other thing is.
They finally realized we didn't have that many people.
Right. And I always say, hold your breath because you never know. It could change by the month.
And at this point in time, we haven't been notified either through gossip or anything about any of the clawbacks, which is what we're talking about in the highway department, projects that were going to be funded, but may not be if the state keeps the money. So we don't know if any of that's happening here or not.
Right. There's some indication, but nothing for certain. And that's what when we get certainty, then I will inform the board and we'll include that in our budget.
So for the next slide, I have our general fund revenue stream breakdown. So I ran the numbers again, and it's the exact same numbers. Forty percent, forty-five percent for property tax, forty percent for sales tax, forty-five percent property taxes, fifteen percent for other. Next slide, I have a breakdown, a more detailed breakdown of our county sales tax. Explains what what makes up the county sales tax. Retail and online sales are still our big revenue streams.
Let me ask you this.
Yes.
We've only been tracking online for, what, two years now?
Pretty sure either three or four.
Because I'm asking, do those two numbers together add up to the percentage that we had just in retail before? Because we've lost so many businesses. I don't want people to think that we're getting more because of online. Because I think what's happening is it's leveled out. And even though the frickin' mortar shop isn't there that was giving us the retail sales, we're getting some from online, but certainly not all because they don't they don't tax all of these companies. They have to produce X number of dollars before they even have to pay tax in Arizona.
Okay, I could generate what was what was our retail before the online tax, you know, a couple of years, either do an average. I'll run multiple.
The reason I'm asking is because I don't want the public to think that we'll because even some of the legislators keep saying, but yeah, but you have all that online that's growing, and you go, yeah, but we have these frickin' mortars that have gone down. So I don't know that it's even a wash.
Okay. Yeah, let me get those numbers for you.
Which is a good thing to look at because you have the same amount of people. They're spending money, but now they're just spending it online. I'm trying to capture that.
Or out of county.
Out of county, yeah.
I mean, we need to encourage people to stop in Vincent and fill up instead of filling up in Tucson, you know.
It's one that's more expensive right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why did we give a zing to Tucson?
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
So going on to the next slide, I think the chart of our assessed valuations for property taxes and so you'll see that the new F Y twenty-five asset valuation increased from one point zero seven billion to one point one four billion. This increase is mostly due to new construction and which is two point nine percent of the increase and point six on property improvements and increases to value. So our next meeting is going to be next week, April sixteenth, then April eighteenth, and it's going to be our elected official work session. And at this point in time, I open for any questions you may have.
There's so much unknown right now.
Correct.
What about the Fusion Center, which seems to me like it's somewhat not exactly duplicating the C COM, but similar to the C COM? What, is it Fusion Center?
Soldier Creek Building, the sheriff's operation.
Oh, yeah. The C COM is just the dispatch center. And so the Fusion Center is a building for departments to meet, but it's not a centralized dispatch center as C COM is. Does, do they have accounting contribution to their budget?
Not supposed to.
No. Okay. The, the.
It was bought by the state, and supposedly they had money to renovate.
Right. So that, that money's been included in that allocation. Okay. I made a note here that we've discussed many times the potential for departure of constitutionally essential employees like deputies and defense attorneys. But one thing, and we've also talked about decreasing population. So what we need to also consider is the potential for further decrease in population of the people that are the taxpayers. Because that's going to affect us or could continue to. So as nice as we want to be to those employees, we've got to think about people excellent, especially, especially with their recent increase in sales tax.
Did you look at figures that show that we're losing population? So I know you looked at population because that was part of the formula for our expenditure limit.
Eighty So for the expenditure, yeah, for the expenditure limit, the same population, we, one thirty-three. I think it's around the same population, thousand more or less.
A hundred and thirty-three thousand. That's our best estimate right now.
That's what we have. But for the Altic, that bigger, it's depending on what would you have been population that.
Right, but I meant the total population. He was asking about if the total population goes down, then there will be less taxpayers to bring in the money that we need in order to run government. And I'm saying, I don't think that our numbers show that our population is decreasing like we noticed about five years ago.
Or be, every ten years you get the census.
Yeah.
And I don't happen to know what it says in between census measures of twenty twenty and twenty ten.
Yeah, we went from twenty-three, I have twenty-three and, I mean, twenty-four and twenty-five expenditure limit, one thirty-two on F Y twenty-four and one thirty-three on F Y twenty-five.
How about the difference between twenty-ten census and twenty-twenty census?
I don't, I don't have that, but I.
And also, it's the, you know, difference between property tax and sales tax, right? Because as you I think mentioned just previously, going to Pima, Pima County, they're increased sales tax, right? I, it seems like it. I don't really know. But we were just talking about their gas prices, basically. But the, the sales tax, right, is not exclusively for Coaches County residents. It's anyone that comes in and purchases. Okay, so you mean like a transient lodging tax? What I mean is that if people come in and purchase, you know, it's not by lodging. It's gas and.
We want to divide your, whatever.
What I was going to say was a transient lodging tax is overtly taxation without representation.
I think he means, Supervisor Judd here, I think he means more like if you go to buy your kids bathing suits at the mall or, well, the hall, whatever you call it there in Sierra Vista. Or if you go to buy some groceries, well, that's not taxed, but, you know, buying things. We buy things, we buy consumer goods, so do the tourists. And sometimes they buy lots of souvenirs and stuff too, and that has plenty of tax on it, so.
Well, as I recall, Douglas and Bisbee are both above ten percent sales tax now. Because they were just barely below, and now they're just over. But whether it's sales tax or any other kind of taxes, it's still not available to the taxpayer anymore after we collect it. No longer discretionary income or whatever.
Well, we always have to wait, and we, we are government as we're sitting around this table. We have to weigh the responsibility of the services that we need to provide by statute and the quality of those services against what we're getting from the public in order to do that. And so I think that sometimes in order to think that we're doing the public a favor, this board in the past has been very unwilling to raise the rates, you know, on, on property taxes. And it put us behind the eight ball for a long time. So that's always a balance, Tom, you know, is the fact of the state requires us to do this, this, and this, you know, the statutes are there, the responsibility is here with us. And so it has to be up to us to bring in enough resources to do that in the best way possible. So that's always a balance.
Your points are well taken, Madam English, and that's why I mentioned constitutionally essential employees like deputies and defense attorneys, for instance. So I understand that there's many services, some of them, they have to be prioritized, as I'm sure that you would agree.
Right. Well, just for example, you know, and this is probably an outlandish example, but most people don't think about planning and zoning as being a requirement for government until something that is distasteful to them wants to move in next door. And then they go, now that's really important. We need to follow the rules, et cetera. So whether you use the word constitutional or not, you know, the, the we try to protect the employees, the, the public, the best way that we can by the services that we provide, whether or not they take advantage of it, you know. And I always tell people, and for the most part, I think it's true, they would say to me, well, I don't get anything out of my taxes. And my reply is, and you are so lucky. Because you haven't been in jail, you haven't had to use our court system, you haven't had to use our health system. And so don't think of that as a bad thing. Think of that as a good thing. So we provide for those people who cannot provide for themselves. Okay, you want us to, are you going to explain any of these or just sending these with us, the back pieces?
Yeah, the.
The appendix.
The appendixes are for projection for next year. I mean, there's there's nothing, there's no information I have projecting besides what we currently have. But this gives you an idea of what our current state and previous years of county sales tax has been along with state shared, HERF, and the V L T. And while at the end, I also placed an informational to show what counts towards our expenditure limit.
Use that result to support the new slides.
Correct.
I didn't know if there was any explanation that you wanted to give us on any of these things or no. Ms. Judd, you have any questions or comments?
I just, you did mention that our revenue was going to be a little bit higher. But I'm going to doubt that if anyone's listening, they, they're going to think they can add things to their budget. Because isn't it true that our expenditures are, are much higher too as well, caused by just the cost of living and things going up? So the cost of everything we purchase is higher. So actually, when you say that, revenues are a little higher, and you did say that, right?
Yes.
That revenues are higher. It doesn't mean that we have more to spend on anything. So we're just lucky they're higher, I think. That's all I wanted to say.
Yes, as we talked about, the increased expenses and as we for providing our benefits for employees have increased close to eight hundred thousand as well.
And that's the county's portion.
So it's, you're absolutely right, Supervisor Judd, is that a lot of people will hear that we have increased revenues, but we also have increased expenses that we need to be careful. I have further comment about this chart which I distributed, and I'm just going to read what Mr. Frisby sent me back on the fourth of this month. It says, upon reviewing the original projections, and what we're talking about is in this report, which is a returnment plan or unfunded liability of the law enforcement pensions. Upon reviewing the original projections during fiscal year twenty-two, it was projected for thirty-nine million dollars in unfunded liability by fiscal year twenty-five with a total of thirty-six point eight funded for that year. That's very poor ratio, thirty-eight, thirty-six percent. But he also adds, I'm pleased to report that our current unfunded actuarial stands at thirty-two million, point six, thirty-two point sixty million, representing a significant increase to fifty percent funded for fiscal year twenty-five. So we want to, I mean, with the best case scenario would be one hundred percent funded, at which it isn't anywhere near, but it is still much better than thirty-six point eight funded, which was the, the previous projection. So I thank Mr. Frisby for pointing that out. And what we need in addition to this, just for the county, is the let's see, what do we miss? We're missing the, the jailers. So this, this is P S P R S, and so what we need is a combined, I should have said, this represents P S P R S. And what we need just for the county is a combined one, like, like we had at one time, which of course, we'd make all those numbers bigger and arches higher. And also, for my constituents, which is Sierra Vista area and Hurford, we have Fry Fire and several other ones. So I've given you the county, this is the latest report that I was able to obtain, which is numbers for, it says, reported June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I don't know if there's an update more recent than this. I got this maybe a month and a half ago or something like that. So for the corp, it looks like unfunded liability for detention, six point six million, in addition to the the unfunded thirty-two million, which we're glad to see that go down. And then for Sierra Vista Police, which I know that we don't have control over that, twenty-seven million for, for the police, and the fire department is fifteen million. So that combines still eighty million that my constituents are looking at as far as it is, it isn't really a debt because there's no interest on it, and it wasn't a loan, but it is nonetheless a liability like a debt is in some ways. So I think everybody has a copy of that for their perusal. And I believe that each of us as supervisors should consider what our municipalities are like. For instance, I think that Bisbee is in much worse shape. Last time I heard about their P S P R S, it was upside down to the extent that that they went into debt to pay off their debt, which is a very bad idea, in my opinion. I would never recommend that. They're talking Weimar Republic type of thing. And I don't happen to know what Douglas's is, but last time I looked at it, it was also very poor. And as I mentioned, their sales tax is also up over, over ten percent. So those supervisors that supervise the Douglas and Bisbee area, that's something to consider.
I, I think that it has been pointed out to me by supervisors in the past from the Sierra Vista and the northern part of the county that we have to be cognizant of the total tax bill of people. And, and I'm saying a peripheral knowledge of that is okay, but we we have different responsibilities than the cities do, and we can't be responsible for what the college does. We can't be responsible for any of the fire districts, and we can't be responsible for the cities. And so while you can't divorce yourself from the whole thing, I don't believe that I can make decisions based on whether the cities in my district have too high of a corp responsibility or a P S P R S responsibility, and therefore I should tax them less for county responsibility. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm not trying to confuse blame with responsibility. So you don't take the blame. Nonetheless, we're still responsible, in my opinion.
But we're responsible for county, county. That's, that's where I have to, where I have to draw the line.
And as we've mentioned before, the county isn't the dirt. It isn't Melody Lane. It is the people.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Judd? Anything else for the good of the order?
No, I don't have anything. Thanks.
You leave your hat at home this morning? It has to do with finances?
I think the subject matter has been covered adequately.
Joe? Okay. I guess we've said it all then. So we'll, we're in a waiting game to get to figure out what the legislature is going to do to us. I should say, or for us. And we are going to be meeting next week, and I doubt that we'll have any information from the legislature. So if the department heads are listening, I don't think there's going to be a windfall before then. So come. I don't think there's going to be a windfall before then, so come in easy, so you won't be let down too far. Having said that, um.
I have one more comment.
Okay.
And that is the theory of Crosby cooked goose economics, which although we don't want to blame the legislature. Uh, they're still responsible, and so whether we're talking about our responsibility to municipalities or the legislature's. Responsibility to the counties is many uh, many things that must be considered, as you might have pointed out, thank you, Adam.
Okay. All right, our next meeting today is at eleven, and the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a work session again. Uh, regarding the enterprise resource planning, having said that, the work session is adjourned.